Just pray with me, please. Poor God, guide us to help the poor so they will realize their need for you, for the kingdom of heaven is theirs. Help us to comfort those who mourn, for they will be comforted. Keep us humble, Lord, for the humble will inherit the whole earth. Make us always hunger and thirst for justice, so that justice will be satisfied. Lord, may we always be merciful, so that we will be shown mercy. Keep our hearts pure, so that we may see you, Lord God. May we always work for peace, because we are your children, O Lord. Bless those who are persecuted for doing right, for the kingdom of heaven is theirs. We also ask that you guide the deliberations of the mayor and aldermen for the benefit of our town. And finally, Lord, we ask your protection for our first responders, especially our police and firefighters, as they unselfishly protect us every day. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance for nation's fight. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here. Okay, you won't.
We received a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting. The meeting, January twenty ninth, set the motion for several minutes.
I make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? All of the favorites say aye, opposed, minutes are. Thank you. Citizens comments? Well, any citizens wish to be heard at this time?
I would just like to make everyone aware that we, uh, beautification committee is, uh, starting a spring beautification contest for businesses and residents that will be awarded in early July. I just want everybody to know and look for information.
Details to follow, Mr. Lee. Details to follow.
Right.
Mr. Lee?
Well, thank you, citizens, uh, some of those folks that have come up and asked about, uh, senior center over there, a couple of things, and, uh, I told them they should come up here, and they said, well, you can go, you're senior too. Anyway, uh, they feel like they don't, aren't comfortable coming up and addressing questions, and two basic things. One is, uh, the handicap restroom, uh, for seniorships is out of order, and they say it's been out of order, I guess, since they added on the library. And they say it's the handicap restroom, too, and, uh, that it's been that way for several years. And, uh, is that something that the administration's aware of? Or, uh, that you got, that after him has got an out of order sign on it and it hasn't worked, uh, since the library addition?
And I would address that, and what was it?
Uh, well, that it's eight, it's not eighty-eight compliant, and, uh, of everything that's going on, we, I would think we should make that a priority, to get that resolved instead of just putting an out of order sign on the door. Uh, and, uh, I went over the other day and talked to them, and when I came in to the vestibule there, there was probably seventy-five dead flies in the floor. So, you know, it's not something that, when people come in, I would think people are going to look down and see a pile of dead flies. And, and, and they said, the cleaning people, I don't think they did it. They don't, they don't clean that anymore. And it was really kind of, kind of an embarrassment. And the other thing was, uh, they said that the city was fixing to spend several thousand dollars putting in an electric door, and they're going to have to take the flagpole down and, and do a bunch of stuff. Is, is that in the budget? Is that up?
Okay, I'll address all of those. Is that an eight? No, no, I want to answer your comments. First of all, unfortunately, the handicap bathroom has been the target of, um, malicious behavior, regardless of how it started. Malicious behavior that contributed to, I don't want to get overly graphic, but unsanitary conditions. So, from time to time, we tried to clean it up, but it has also led to some sewer issues, which we happen to currently be addressing now. That's why there's a broken up pavement in the parking lot. When you put down a lot of debris in a toilet that should not be in a toilet, you get backups, and that leads to other problems. So, we're addressing that. It will be restored as a handicap bathroom best it can. When they built the building, they did the worst. That's what they designed. I don't know if we can increase it to current standards or not, but it's something we can look at.
Well, they said it worked fine until you did the addition, not you, until the city did the addition and put in a bathroom in the library or something. Is that exactly correct?
Sure, but I don't know if that is.
Well, and that's what the library people said and the senior citizens. So, and, and, and they're both tied into the same, uh, trunk line, and the one in the library has a problem.
Right.
Uh, but it's.
It's never been handicap accessible.
Pardon?
It's never been handicap accessible for somebody with a wheelchair.
Well.
Never.
Okay, they, well, anyway, a restroom that people use. And they say, when you flush it, regardless, it's water. The librarian people said it backflows in to the other bathroom. It has done that ever since it was built. So, that would indicate it would be a design installation flaw, not what somebody has put in it.
Well, it's a combination of things, because as that goes down the line, it backs up, and what that trunk line does, picks up the library restroom bathroom, goes down and picks up the, on the kitchen end, the men's room and ladies' room of the community center. That then takes the right and the left and goes into a septic tank. There's no sewer on that side of the building. So, that's why there's recent digging up, and we have more digging to do. But we will address that to cure the trunk line, as well as make other common repairs.
So, if needed, you'll put a random pump in or whatever it takes to resolve it?
But we don't like chewing gum wrappers, lollipops, sticks, a lot of paper towels, those kinds of things that maybe we need a lot of signs, but the toilet is designed to carry certain objects and no other.
But you've got two other restrooms there that doesn't seem to have a problem.
They do have a problem. That's what started.
And they said there's lots of, of, of things off the wall that needs to be replaced that were not maintained with the facility.
Well, the building was just repaged, and so some of that has been addressed, I'm sure, but I'll take a look at that real soon tomorrow. But, uh, yeah, they had asked for, as an example, a handicap bar in the men's room, in the men's room down by the kitchen. I think that's been installed. It will be installed shortly. There was some touch-up tape that needed to be done. There's some issues over there that we need to address. In good cooperation with.
The building operation itself for a new entrance or something, what's the deal there?
The deal there is we're applying for a double AARP grant to do some work and fixing. The committee feels, and I agree with them rightly so, that it's not easy access for eighty-eight. What may happen, depending on design and pricing and everything else, is we remove that front glass panel, so to speak, make that the main entrance, and not go in on the side and then take the right and all that maneuver.
Like saying.
But yes, and we're in the process, and you'll hear about that later, that we're applying for a grant to do that and see.
But it's not something the contractors are about to come over here and.
No, it's got to work. It has to be, first, the grant has to be awarded, and then if it's not awarded, we'll see what we can do. If it is awarded, we'll make that.
They will approve it, no?
Yes. Well, interestingly enough, some of the people that are seniors have been to those meetings, so, and again, I don't, I'm not looking for wrong call, but whoever has those questions, please feel free to call me, talk to some of the people already on this committee. I think Martha Anne has been involved, I think Jessica Travolore or Alderman has been involved. So, it didn't start yesterday. It's good, these committees have been working very hard to get something done.
I would just ask.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other, um, citizen comments at this time? Mr. Waller?
Uh, in two thousand twenty-three, there was, there was going to be some urgency to, to get a stormwater runoff ordinance for the town. And I worked with the city council assiduously and came up with a straw man, and then there was a meeting of the city council, and, um, I modified the draft of that to final form, and I haven't heard anything in three months. I'm just curious, is it a dead issue or is there going to be some feedback for fine tuning of the stormwater runoff ordinance?
I expect some fine tuning this week. It's not a dead issue at all. It's something that has to be addressed. I will say publicly, I'm well aware, not because others are, of the amount of time and effort you put into getting us started on that project, seeing how the town didn't have too much information or ordinance on stormwater. Other things, unfortunately, have come up from TDEG that we had to address immediately with deadlines. Now, we should be back on track to hopefully get something by the March meeting. Because, no, stormwater is not dead. It's a very important issue as it feeds our open water source, as you know better than anyone, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, that we're proceeding, going forward with it, or is it dead?
No, it is not dead, and we will go forward with it. And perhaps Mr. Wilson, who is here, can address that before I'm done.
Okay. Second thing I want to ask is, there any reason why our town enforcement officer is not enforcing the ordinances on the Rocky Top, um, pavement, non-pavement for a record service?
Across A to one thirty-five and down there? Again, is it the towing area across from A to one thirty-five? Is it the other side of the interstate?
It's on the north side, you know, it's on the north side of Foresight Street. The Rocky Top, uh, record service is operating a towing service, and they're not complying with the ordinance for record services.
And I, I honestly don't remember what its license has. Uh, Mr. Lawyer, is it licensed as a record service?
Yes, it has proper verification for truck repair, and I'm aware of what Mr. Waller's talking about. I've had other people, I've had other people bring it to my attention as well, trying to get everything squared up on the Foresight, or I mean, on the, on the, uh, twelve street end, and then we're going to move over to a couple of different compliances. There's some ongoing compliance that's been tending on the Foresight side that we're going to address as well in one package.
Uh, please, when you finish that research, let us know, so we can keep people informed. Thank you. Various communications, uh, additions, whatever else comes up. The next meeting is, uh, March twenty-fifth with the mayor and alderman, the last Monday of the month. There's an Easter egg hunt, March twenty-third, with the rain date of the thirtieth. There will not be a planning commission meeting, March fifth, as there is nothing on the agenda. Quite frankly, the owners come forward with a time limit for southeast Tennessee development to renew anything. So, um, those are my comments for now. I'll be calling on people to go down the agenda. First one is the police department.
I guess, no, the, this is going to be your copies. Nobody got some of these before.
It's spinning anyway.
I don't know the weather, so. Good afternoon. All right, I'm going to run down the list here. Um, this is from January fifteen to, uh, February fifteen. Um, public intoxication, we had one arrest. Driver suspended, one, and two DUIs in the city. Uh, we did have one aggravated assault. We had two domestics, one reckless driving, uh, three drug-related cases. Uh, we had five theft or marsh killings. Those are from, one was from a car, uh, the other one was from storage facilities, a few calls. Uh, we've written twelve citations. We had a total number of two hundred and fifty calls from the nine-one-one center, and, uh, we had fourteen vehicle crashes. Um, none of them, none of them were, um, with major injuries, they're minor or no injuries at all. So, um, of course, the weather's been playing a lot, you know, as to why some of these numbers are, are down. It is going to get warmer outside. Um, I took a trip down the, um, dirt trail today. Just want to make sure that it's, uh, nice and clear. Um, just be mindful that we are going to have more and more visitors and citizens that are going to be traveling, going to be getting out. So, let's continue to keep slowing down. Um, school zones, please, you know, slow down through the school zones. Um, you will start to see a lot more, um, traffic, blue lights in those school zones here very, very soon. Um, so I'll probably be simple planes, but I'm going to slow that path down. So, anytime you take your feet off the brakes, you just right to drive back up. So, other than that, we don't really have anything else.
Alderman, any questions on the police department?
You said the theft was from storage building, it's not home?
Storage facilities, not home, just, um, yes, sir.
Is this relevant to the police department?
Yes, there is for police department. In, in the last couple of weeks, I don't know if this happened to anyone else or not, but going right through the middle of town, where you have the turning zone, have vehicles pass me two different times, a flying. Had, had one today, I'm going to Tracy City, one passed me there, right, right about the school zone there, a flying, cut off, and they went on their way up to the nursing home. Looked like two paw heads. I don't know what they were, but I mean, that's what they, that's what they looked like.
Well, I can, I can assure you that I'm very aware of that, because I was doing school zones today myself, because other officer was on the call, and, um, I had an individual do the same thing. But because I was letting the buses out, I couldn't go and address that situation. So, that's one of the reasons why I brought up what I did.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be bringing, um, some of our guys in a little earlier, stay a little later. So, we're going to try to address the situation.
Like I said, it's happened many twice, and the only other thing is that I noticed is like, and, and just nothing gets anyone, but they're throwing garbage out everywhere. I mean, Montego looks like a, you know.
Trash guy.
You think they're going, your, the little backdrop going down to the convenience center when you're going through town, so I mean, there's. And I think a lot of them getting their stuff at the fast food, and as quick as they hit the Tracy City highway, they're going to throwing it out, you know? So, I got, they're going from Marion to Grundy and just fishing it out.
Yes, sir.
Well, just so you know, I contacted the sheriff's office in Marion County, and they will police that area behind Southern Firearm across the road. I've noticed that as well. I don't know why people do that, but they do.
Yeah.
Uh, Marion County was very supportive. The sheriff was very supportive, and he will send, if he hasn't already, uh, a crew to, to help that.
They're all there now.
They're what?
They're all there now on one thirty-five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My department?
Travis, you must have paid your dues to Microsoft, because it booted for you.
Ran twenty-six emergency calls for February so far. Um, we've had several different, uh, required trains going on. We just had the ANLA buy us those pipe apartments and shut up, except part of that this past weekend. We're seeking an ordinance from the town on that, that fire recovery system. Uh, that's the, the reimbursement recovery expenses that's associated with fire calls. And then, thank you later on, I'll forget when we get into that. That was on my mind, so I'll stick it in there. The department's begun procedures to work in the words of Knox Box System, um, for commercial businesses and gated communities. This kind of all fell apart today, this morning. Um, I've got a meeting tomorrow with the gated community owners within the, the Montego Fire District area. I think there's eight of them that's going to come to a meeting and just kind of go over some ideas. We're trying to, try to incorporate a unified system for all the gates, so they all work in conjunction the same way. There's just several of them that doesn't work, or not there, or it's just a, it's a, it's a mess for emergency services right now, so we're going to see if we can add that up tomorrow, hopefully.
That meeting's Wednesday, though, right?
Wednesday, yes. My, I'm running, I'm running backwards. What is it today, Saturday? So, yeah, Wednesday morning, we're going to meet at ten o'clock and, and go over everything. So, that Knox Box, let me elaborate a little bit on them. The Knox Box system, the, the box that you see in the, in the cities, it's got the little box, the key box hanging outside of commercial businesses on the wall. So, anything that happens after hours, we're standing by waiting on the key holder, or if there's something that looks kind of out of place. The only option you've got is to break a door or break a glass to get into, or wait on. This is a system that leaves a key there for the business that we're able to access it after hours for emergency services response. Um, works good for the sprinkler systems in certain areas. It goes off and allows us to have access to, to shut the utilities off and prevent property damage. I mean, it's all around good systems. I'll report more on that as we kind of figure out some pricing and some different schedule that's associated with it. Um, we've used about fifteen thousand gallons of water, I told John earlier today, with the fire department. About all I've got on other than the grants, there's two grants that I mentioned last month that we were, we were awarded, the CBDG grant and the BP grant. We're still looking on legislators to turn that money loose. And the grants are, but we don't have any money yet, so we're waiting.
Justin Lee.
That's right. Questions, anything?
Two comment. First of all, you've done a lot of work on the grants. Now, of course, it's some true old grants. Someone has to send a check.
That's right.
And that's what we're waiting for.
Okay. The other thing is, explain in a sentence or two, EVOP, because that, to me, is very important. The state of Tennessee has, there's two sections to EVOP. There's VFK, that's Vanessa K. Freech. She was a gal that was killed in Chattanooga several years ago. So, the state enlisted a bill, but we have to take that in emergency operations for, all of our drivers have to have the VFK side of it. Then on top of it, on the insurance side, we have to have EVOP, which is emergency vehicles operators, of course, and that certifies all the guys to be released on liability after the drive.
I mentioned this. This is just one more example of the work that Chief Lawyer is doing with the fire department to maintain training across the board. This mandatory driving, uh, emergency vehicle force is important. It's done, and, uh, they set it up, and it's a date thing. We do affidavit classroom, affidavit driver.
Eight-hour class, and then now we're getting ready to start in March. We'll start extracation. Every two years, we've got a re-certified fire extracation, so that's a forty-hour class. All these classes are done in-house. We've got three state instructors in, in the department, so it's going to save us a ton of money.
And all volunteers?
Yep, all volunteers. And we're hosting for the other, we're neighboring departments, so like, like Saturday, we had five different departments show up, and I think guys, I don't know, probably twenty, twenty-three, five guys, something to come to, to get the certifications. So, pretty awesome thing for us.
Alderman, any questions on the fire department? If you want to go.
Do they pay? Do they pay you to come to that?
Depending. Now, some of those classes cost money. There's one class that we'll do later on. It's about twelve hundred bucks. Each, each department that's coming, we'll divide that on how many departments is here, and then we'll, we'll take up a pool for the, for the class type. And then normally, you know, eight hour day, forty hour week on the extracation, on, on the training. Um, maybe Swan will provide a meal for us that day, or maybe Tracy City will provide to pay for the class, and we'll host it, and we just kind of go back and forth with it, and all evens out. Yep. So, and I think out of all of us, I think we've got twenty-six guys on the roster now. Out of twenty-six firefighters, we have six that's waiting to get their, their state certifications. Eight of them are National Registered Firefighters, not their commission. So, it's kind of a long one.
Thank you. Do you want to do building?
Yeah, so building's pretty easy. There's, there were six inspections performed. We have three new permits that's open, and I want, I want to talk to Mr. Waller and the rest of you. So, the, the complaint that you had mentioned on the tracking, that's, that's an open. Uh, I've got about three different phone numbers written on my desk, if, if I'm going to pursue that. Um, trying to figure out why that, why that was done, what initiated that, plus the regular parking lot ordinance, the fourteen hundred seven, I believe, parking lot, and, and, and all of that with it as well. So, that's another one on the complaint. So, yeah, that, that is on the desk. I think Billy had mentioned it to me early on, uh, last week, about.
Your ears here. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, codes enforcement, we had one court appeal from the previous month. Um, taken plan satisfied with commercial businesses. That was off Dixie Lee. Um, the Dixie Lee, um, that we're working on, the proud to mention that was in court, uh, two months ago now, and we'll be able to fill. Um, the small yard signs throughout town, kind of like the election signs, size signs, and, uh, going through the median stuff, painting them down, for small businesses to move them, take them to the fire hall, and call them, if they've got a number on them, let them know we pulled their signs, they'll know the ordinance, and such like that. And the commercial building that has suffered some fire damage for the past six months, the six-month mark was about a week ago. Then I started tearing that down, started working on things that properly got, so there's a way on that.
Can. Which property, I'm sorry, which property was that?
The.
That's the local one, the local one, that they're working on it.
So, can y'all, can y'all tell us, I think they got six months to start cleaning it up, right? What's the timeline on rebuilding before it has to comply with the current, all the current ordinances? I mean, they, they get us, they.
I'm familiar with what you're talking about. That was a residential property on North Left. We've done previous administration on there. I can't find any clear verbiage on that. I've looked all over for that, that entrance, and I heard it was a year. That's here, so I have to, like, it's a paper.
Okay, okay. I looked it up for that residence, so I can, let me see if I can, I'll see if I can help you with it.
That's right. Thank you.
But I can't remember the answer.
Any questions on construction ordinance? Thank you. Thank you, John. Let's do, uh, arts and rec. Martha Anne, do you have anything to add to that? Ty, do you have anything to point to?
Yes, uh, just to let folks here know, we did successfully register youth in Montego baseball, once again partnering with Tracy City. I think we have a better understanding of what the expectation here is. We were not prepared to do it ourselves, nor do I think, if I have anything to do with it, as long as Tracy City is partnering with us as well as they have, we will continue to, to do so. I see no sense in us reinventing the way. They seem to be running an excellent program, and we're happy to be with them. They will be practicing in, in Montego and playing games in Montego. So, uh, that's a positive thing. Uh, there's, this March seventh, we will have a town hall meeting here at five-thirty, uh, to review the results from the recent survey that we did for recreation in town Montego, and also to get input from the community, hear what you have to say, and, uh, above and beyond what was said in the survey. So, uh, all of this is part of an effort to put together a plan. I don't know whether folks are aware of this, but when you go ask for money, they would, as y'all were expounding on earlier, when you go to ask for money, people kind of actually have a plan and want you to know that you, that you, you have a need for what you, there's a, there's a need that demonstrated for, for what you're asking for, and so this is kind of, uh, the recreation survey and town hall meeting and other things that have gone off, that's kind of where those things have sprouted from. Um, let's see. We are making plans to have a, have a soccer program in the fall. Once again, partnering with Tracy City. Maybe we'll have the opportunity to take more of a lead at that point rather than, uh, having somebody that's, that's doing more of the heavy lifting. So, what next, that's when we can help more.
What time was the meeting, March seventh again?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty here.
Yeah, I hope you put it on the calendar when I ask you.
I just.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Ty, if people have not yet filled out the survey, where could they find that?
Uh, there's a link. If you'll go on to the, uh, town website, under the mayor's memo, memorandum. Uh, there's a link there, so you can access it there.
Okay.
Where is the memo of something we added, topics that needed immediate attention? So, it should be on the front page when you fill out the consent.
You have to scroll down just a little bit.
What?
You have to scroll down just a little bit.
Scroll down just a little?
Yeah.
Okay. Jessica, do you want to talk about the grant?
Well, uh, the town is going to apply for an AARP grant.
Well, the town is going to apply for an AARP grant that is due in about two weeks. But the benefit of this grant is that there's no match to the city. So, you'll apply for about thirty thousand dollars, you'll get funds for improvements to be done at the library and the senior citizens building. And you all know, thirty thousand dollars always, that doesn't go very far, but the benefit of, another benefit of this match grant is that, you know, let us know by May if we, if we win or not awarded the funds. And then we have to get our projects done by December fifteenth, so it'd be a quick action. It's not big enough for that, but we can evaluate other options for funds. I think in talking to the senior citizens, because Doran has started bingo over there once a month. And there's also, they're playing cards in the evening and board games. And there's a lot more use in the senior citizens. So we had an opportunity to meet and to talk to more people about what they like and what they don't like. And this will give us some ideas for doing improvements as we go forward.
It's been an active committee, both Juan and Jessica, trying to put pieces together to improve that, really, Mr. Lay, you made it to us earlier. So, it's an ongoing process. Hopefully we'll get the grant, if not, we'll keep looking. There are other grants out there with different timetables, so we'll see where we can find it. But thank you for that tip.
And if you all don't know about the library, Karen, our librarian, she does, she does a fabulous job keeping that library up the way she does. And especially for seniors, they have, there's a fact service there and they can use the computers for no charge. So, it's really wonderful. And it's separate bus that bring people that don't have place to travel and bring them right to the building. So, it's a wonderful resource that, that I wasn't as aware of back then.
Street department, do you have any?
Just trying to stay ahead on the pot over, that is.
Thank you.
That's the other.
Okay. Let's go to utility. Travis, you want to start with some of the discussions that we're dealing with?
Just as an update, we have submitted to TDEC several weeks ago for approval for the I-NI correction project. And we're just waiting for them to grant approval. As soon as we receive that, we'll advertise that project out to bid. It'll be a thirty day advertisement period. And then probably around ninety days after advertisement, I think we would expect that contractor on board. Certainly we'd bring back a recommendation of award after the bid opening to hold for approval. That would be, you know, happen sometime next week in the MARCH meeting to bring back that recommendation to put the bids and put the project and discuss where that, where that falls in the budget and so on and so forth.
And you're describing the sealed bid process that this would be?
That's true. So that, that would hopefully be at the MARCH meeting or at the very latest, the APR meeting. Just when we expect to have the recommendation to award or for like that. As far as other projects go, that's really the only one that we have going. Maybe to, to answer some of the previous questions about the funding and the grants. So like Nate mentioned, the town has received about two point six million dollars in grants, over about six different grants. Travis, why is that? Because I mean, they're in the back, but people otherwise may not be with me, so I get myself in a-
So, over the last twelve eighteen months, the town has received about two point six million dollars in grant funding. Unfortunately, most all of water and sewer grants are not a hundred percent subsidized, which means there are matching funds or funds that come out of pocket for projects. Although that, that is a lot of money, two point six million dollars, it's a good thing. But a lot of those projects had matching funds. And so the projects or the work that was done, that were expensed, that were not capitalized, were projects or activities or tasks that had to be done as a precursor to do some of the other projects. For instance, the mapping project had to be done before the rehab project. The capacity project had to be done to really answer development questions so that development would not come to a standstill. And so those projects also qualified for match money. So although those projects were not capitalized, they were indirectly part of the grant process because they qualify for match funds, which means it's monies that the town had to come out of pocket anyway for. So, to be efficient, those projects were performed early and they were, we were able to go back and capture those as match monies that, that are required for some of those grants. So although those were out of pocket costs that the town had, had to expend, the town had to expend those monies anyway as part of the matching portion of the grants that were received out of the two point six million dollars. So, just trying to explain that a little bit there.
Does so much of that fall into the requirements of TDEC to get the grants?
That's correct. That's correct. So, for instance, the ARC grant, that was a five hundred thousand dollar grant. That was a fifty percent match. But instead of saying the town had to come out of, of the pocket for five hundred thousand, we were able to, to utilize the ARP monies as the matching funds for the ARC grant, which is totally legit as far as TDEC goes. But then there's also matching funds for the ARP, which were somewhere between, I don't know exactly what that one is off the top of my head, maybe twenty-five percent. And so, some of those, those funds were used for the projects that were not capitalized for the ARP monies. And so, again, the importance of performing those early was that put us in a position where we now could do the rehab project instead of waiting. Otherwise, we would be two or three years behind and we would miss the deadlines. Important thing is, if we had not done that at the time that we did, the ARP grant has a deadline that you have to have all monies encumbered by November of this year. We would not have been able to meet that. And so you would have lost over a million dollars with the grant funds because we would not have had the information needed to do the project that we're doing right now, had we not have went ahead and, and performed those projects that were expensible projects and not, not capitalized. And so, in essence, you, you were ahead of the curve, but it did cause you to, to come out of pocket early and caused an issue with the comp trouble.
Well, to say the least, there were deadlines with grants as well as the process.
That's great.
It's just, I thank you for cracking that, it's a job. Are there any questions specific to the utility report that came up in the citizens' comment portion?
Yeah, so at this point, the grant money is being used, we're just trying to figure out what needs to be fixed. Is that correct?
That, actually, we've already figured that out. We're, we're in the stage of repair, so, so we, we know what needs to be repaired. We, we've performed all the design work, and so we're actually just waiting on TDEC to approve the plan so that we can move forward and make those repairs with all the funding.
So repairs being done, but nothing we've done so far has anything to do with increasing capacity, only repairing the existing?
It, indirectly it does, because we could not have gotten to the point we're at in designing and figuring out what needs to be repaired without first mapping the system and first figuring out locating the defects in the system through the camera work. All of those things were necessary. It's kind of like performing a conventional survey on a construction site. You can't go out and start building a building until you do a survey and figure out where all your points are going to be. So, so that's, similarly, that's, all of those tasks were precursors to the design of this rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer that we're now waiting on approval from the state.
Is it dealing just with sewer though, not just, not with water supply itself?
Uh, no, we actually, we finished the rehabilitation of both water tanks. So, one tank is a nineteen sixty-seven tank that has only been rehabilitated one time since it was installed. We rehabilitated the Bose tank, which was installed, excuse me, in nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, and that it never had any hanging or sand blasting at all whatsoever. And so, we're really getting caught up on three decades of work in the last twelve months. And so luckily, the town has two point six million dollars worth of grants to apply to these projects. And so, we've really been working in water and sewer both at the same time.
And to go to his question, did, did that increase the capacity of either one of those?
Uh, the tanks did not increase the capacity, but it increased the life of the tank and the quality of water. And also, that was an NOV that was issued by the state.
Is it straight capacity though? Didn't, we haven't, we have an adjusted capacity for sewer or water?
On the water side, no. On the sewer side, the I-NI project will address capacity because we're removing storm water or rainwater that is leaking into the system that should not be there, which creates capacity or room for wastewater production that should be there. So, sewer, yes, water, no.
Last question. What will be the next project, then what, the next phase we'll work on?
Uh, there's several projects that, over the next five to ten years, that the town needs to perform under a capital improvement plan that, you know, obviously with the, with the water and sewer system, these pipes in the sewer were put in probably in the fifties, sixties. A lot of these water lines were put in the fifties and sixties. So, the work is never done, unfortunately, and, which is why that rates are important because per state guidelines, the rates have to support the infrastructure. And so, and that's basically the enterprise fund. And so they can't take a bake sale money and put it in to feed the water. And so, those rates are the only thing that a utility or a town has to, to pay for those things. And so, as equipment ages out, pumps die and pump stations need to be upsized or pumps go out, lines deteriorate, then, then those things are planned and, and rehabilitated or repaired in the future. And so, there certainly should be a list for projects over the next five to ten years. And we, we have those, and that's part of the process of, like, what, what the board is trying to, to do is to not get in a position where you have, you're trying to repair twenty years' worth of infrastructure in two years because you have to. And so that's what caused a big crunch in rates because people had to pay for it all at once in an emergency. Luckily, the town has gotten grants that have absorbed all of that this round. And so, in order to prevent that, they, you know, they, they have to, to use the rate structure to, to pay for those things.
Okay. Thank you. Ty, do you have a question? Quick question.
So in your professional opinion, without getting into too much detail, is this in general an issue of deferred maintenance? And previous to this administration and what's being done right now is, in your professional opinion, being responsible guardians of the resource?
I think repairing and doing the projects now is, is obviously responsible. The state says you have to. You, you have to to provide the services of, for sewer and water because when y'all flush the toilet or turn the faucet on, you want the correct response. And so, obviously, that's a yes. That's a hundred percent those projects should be performed. I can't say what was done before I was here and what schedule of maintenance or work was done. And so for me to answer that, I can't really answer anything prior to when I started up in Mont Eagle, which is just-
Thank you. John, do you have anything under the utility section?
No, I don't.
I have a question, thanks, John, for that report. It looks like, it looks like, just to further emphasize the point, that with nine inches of rain last month, I-NI made up fifty-three percent of what we treated at our wastewater treatment plant? That, I- The effluent treated, the total effluent treated, do you have a copy of this, John?
No.
There's, there's a unit issue there, because I'm, I'm not making any sense out of that number, but if you take as a percentage of meter sales, we, we charged people for three point four million gallons of wastewater treatment last month. And then in addition to that, it looks like we treated another one point eight million gallons of rainwater from our leaking sewer system. So, just to emphasize that, if that, does that, do those numbers make sense, Travis?
Unfortunately, yeah. And we, we probably, I could probably show you where all that's coming from. And unfortunately, this initial project won't address all of that, which is something that goes, that, you know, we, we're talking about some now, about what comes next. Well, that, that's in the future, another project sometime down the road to, to really dial in and, and correct all of those issues because you only have a finite amount of money. Construction is very expensive right now, and so we're hoping the bids will come in favorable and that we'll be able to do as much work as we can with the money that we have now and not have to, to cut some of the project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next on the agenda, planning commission, as I recited earlier, there will not be a MARCH meeting. The only thing that is on the table of the planning commission is to change zoning of C two and C three to allow mobile home parks, trailer parks, whatever in C three rather than in C two. So, that's an ordinance that will be prepared, discussed by the planning commission, and I will move in due time. Okay, Aldrin, Lori, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Jessica?
Yes, sir.
Dan? Nate?
Just a reminder to everybody that the Institute, American Institute for Architects, is gonna be in town in April. Those dates are- Twenty-five, April twenty-five, April twenty-sixth and April twenty-seventh. And so I was trying to get everybody to get that on their calendar. On the twenty-fifth, we're gonna have a big shindig here at City Hall where you're gonna have an opportunity to talk to all the planners. They're gonna have some activities for all citizens to participate in. So, whether you think this is a great idea or you think it's a terrible idea to do planning, come out, we want to hear all your opinions. And then on the twenty-seventh, they're gonna give us a, a presentation of what they think, sort of a, a look under the hood at what the plan that they're putting together is gonna look like. So, please plan and participate, tell your friends to participate. It's, it should be an exciting time and we called it Imagining Mont Eagle. It's the, the three day event, so more, more will be coming. I think we're gonna get something in the, in the water bill, we're gonna send out some postcards with, got all sorts of stuff.
Thank you. Moving to old business, the second reading of the ordinances that you went over. The first one dealing with unit size. Is there a motion to accept on the second reading, ordinance zero one dash two four? Is there such an option? Is there a second to the motion? If there's no second, it dies without a second. Okay?
Y'all got to avoid by tomorrow.
Well, there was no second to discuss it.
I know. I know. But I was, all prepped and primed.
I'm sorry. Next, second reading of ordinance zero two dash two four. Is the Bose additional zoning of the little piece that was left off from the main block?
That's right. There's the language and property and questions, it's right here.
I move to approve. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries on the second reading. Next, the second reading of ordinance zero three dash two four, the water rates issue. Is there a motion to approve on the second reading, that ordinance? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there discussion on the motion? All those in-
Well, I just want to say, we talked about this a little bit in the public meeting, and I think it said it last month. I initially really, really didn't like- And I think it said it last month, I initially really, really didn't like the five-dollar-per-month flat rate. When I looked in the bills, I recognized it. I think it's going to capture more of the absentee folks than it is the low-income folks. But I did, if you were in the workshop earlier today or the workshop last month, we talked a lot about this. And I think that the real answer is that we need a rate study that can help us look long-term. And when we were discussing this in the first workshop where we brought it up a month ago, I think everybody was in agreement that we need perhaps a professional rate study done. And it may very well be that this is a short-term stopgap. But because we had a loss in last year's operating and we're on tap for a loss in this year's operating, we've got to do something to get T-DAC thinking that we're doing something. So, I wish we could have this based on a rate study that looked at our forecast, our future costs and revenues. But we're trying to move and try to move in equitably as we can.
Thank you. Exactly. These funds would go to things like rate studies and other things that we have to do to take us to the next step and the next step. Nobody likes increases, but this is the business we're in. So, I apologize, but we have to do this.
Quick question. Does that five dollars go into the general fund? Does it go into...
No, there's a separate fund for water and sewer, and that's the enterprise fund.
Okay.
Anything we do for water and sewer goes to the enterprise fund.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
And if we don't set this, if we don't go, the states will come in and possibly go a bit more correct.
Oh, absolutely. If the state comes in and does their listening, they'll say, no, no, that's not enough. You've got to do this, that, and the other thing. We're stuck by state order, and there's nothing to talk about.
But that's based on your spending.
Based on spending and income.
Well, yeah, but if you're spending more, if you spend less, you need less income.
Well, that's something that we've always been looking at, is spending less, even to the point of changing some contractors and getting other...
But for thirty years, the councils always say, T-DAC, if we don't do this, T-DAC's going to do it. That's really not true. It is if you maintain your level of spending.
T-DAC will come in if there are two years of losses of income versus expenses.
But if you will adopt a budget that is based on what your revenue is, you will not be in violation.
Well, and sometimes, as you know, easier said than done. But yes, we are looking at all the budget items in this upcoming...
The point is, y'all want to spend so much money to maintain our utility system. We need to say, that's why we're raising rates. You know, to say, T-DAC is going to, if we don't do this, T-DAC is going to come and do it.
But we've been told they may well, so if you have the two years of losses...
But I think your point, your point's a good one. And as we were talking about earlier in the public meeting, a lot of the money that we're spending right now, I mean, our increases in expenses can almost completely be put in the administrative column. And it's to spend money to get ready, to get these grants, and to deal with some of this deferred maintenance over time. So, and those things can't be capitalized. And so, it's causing an operating loss that we are having to deal with. But I do think that a lot of it is about deferred maintenance over the last series of decades. And we're trying to do it all at once, and that's expensive. Do I hope that the administrative costs are going to go down? Yes. Are we talking about different ways to bring those administrative costs back down? Absolutely. We just don't have the solution yet. And like I said, I don't, I don't, I do think that, at least for my vote, there's not going to be another base charge, service charge increase added to our bills because I don't like it. I think we ought to be charging people based on consumption, and I think that's what several people have said. And going forward, but we got to have a professional help us with that. I downloaded the spreadsheet of all our water and sewer customers, and I cross-eyed looking at the spreadsheet. But the way it's set up, it was very difficult in the timeframes that we were given to come up with what I felt like was a better thought-out rate structure. So, I'm going to go with this one for now. It just feels very firm.
There's a lot more to be done. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Dory? I'm going to say no.
Jessica? And Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for that, that assistance. The last one is the second reading of ordinance zero-four dash twenty-four concerning payroll increases. Is there a motion to accept on the second reading, Order zero-four dash two-four?
So, move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just to clarify, because there have been questions, this is general fund. So, this is not related to water and sewer. So, there was a, there was a, an ordinance proposed the last year that was voted down, and that one included raises for water and sewer. And there were several of us who just didn't feel like it was responsible to do that when we were in this situation. So, this is general fund only.
Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Yes. Jessica, yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. That concludes old business under new business. Is anyone applying for a permit?
I have two.
Let's do the first one. Is anyone here from Hancock Recker Service?
Yes.
Well, the short story is, where will you be and what are you going to do?
I'm Warren Hancock, and I'm Hancock Recker in Chattanooga. And I've had a piece of property under in Dixie Lee for two years, and I'd like to open up a recker lot later.
And this is across the interstate at eight-to-one-thirty-five?
Yes.
And where is the property located?
It's on the right-hand side, across from the old town.
Okay. Just maybe do that.
Is this ready for move-in, or you've got to do some building?
I'm getting it ready. I've just got to finish cleaning up the lot and clean up the old building that's been empty for a couple of years.
And you understand this is just a permit, your license would be through the county?
Yes. Yes.
So, we had talked about a couple of months ago that we used to hold building permits or business permits until the life safety issues had all been addressed, and we were ready for move-in. Where did that conversation go?
I don't know what they're moving into. Is it basically a...
Of course, okay, office, office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think...
Did Travis take off?
Well, I'm sure that whatever it is, you'll be working with our building inspector to...
Yes, yeah. I know that he'll have to come out and spade.
But he hasn't been out yet.
No, no, it's not ready. I figure we give him a call once it's ready to go.
And I understand getting the permit, so you can't...
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept this permit for Hancock Service? Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Keep in touch.
I will keep in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is low-hanging fruit company.
Oh, well, y'all know, I've lived around trucks, but my trailers are parked up there at nine forty Dixie Lee. And I've been conflicted on if that really needs to be segregated from the recker service because I do have a designated area for that versus when I moved all my trailers off of the railroad track over here and start parking old layers. I felt like doing the right thing, make sure I'm in compliance as far as having my trailers parked up there.
Thank you. And this is on the left going...
Nine forty Dixie Lee. Yeah, that property on the left.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this business permit for low-hanging fruit? Make a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Permit approved. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. With both of these business permits, since we did not have Travis deliver on the life and safety of the codes enforcement, are these all subject to that inspection from Travis? Or how do we, how do we make sure that we're...
Well, I think we've approved them. I think Travis will follow up. If they're in violation, then the violation will cure that problem. Right now, I understand getting the permits is a tendency. I don't know if people want to proceed when they hope to get a permit. I think since there is no fee attached, it's more a, like, a better saying, paperwork desire. They have to satisfy the county and state requirements.
And I'm not worried about you, Michael. I just want to make sure that we're...
Well, let's get it straight. Would you come up here? We just approved two business permits. The question on the floor is, have they passed life safety inspection? One said, no, they hadn't. The other one, I don't know what building they planned to put up. Would you make it your business to be in touch with Hancock Reckoning and Low-Hanging Fruit to make sure they comply? Because we have approved them, and the feeling might be that maybe we shouldn't have approved them until you've inspected them.
I just want to make sure there's a process to make sure that everybody, given problems that we've had in the past with codes enforcement and life safety issues with businesses, I just want to make sure there's a process and everybody knows so that we're treating everybody the same.
That's right.
And so...
Have you been out to either of the sites?
Give me just a minute. You guys, let me pull up my records.
Okay.
Like I say, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I just want to make sure we have a process and we're treating everybody the same.
Well, I think we do. David?
Well, he's doing that. Just a reminder that, reminder that March fifth is Super Tuesday, and we'll be using this room for voting. We need to be in the building no later than six a.m. to set up, to be able to open up at seven. And the polls will stay open until seven p.m., so hopefully somebody will be here to unlock the door.
Can you guess who? I will be here at five o'clock.
Need to be here no later than six o'clock. We have to be in the building then to start setting stuff up. And I will be picking up supplies the day before at nine o'clock down in Jasper. And I'll need to be able to unload everything except the voting machines here on the floor.
Did somebody say something? Did somebody, early on, have a question?
Don't ask any questions.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be here.
Be sure to come out to vote. And by the way, I think tomorrow's the last day of early voting, if you happen, so.
Greg, I ask if we need to talk about this fire recovery. It's not on the agenda, but...
Thank you. No, and it was just really a discussion. I don't know how far you want to take the action. The insurance cost fire recovery system is a company that will search interstate fires that we respond to, chase the insurance companies, chase the trucking company, do all that has to be done. They will retain a portion of that money, I believe it was thirty-three percent. The balance comes to the town. Absent that, we have not been that successful in getting in touch with insurance companies due to driver cooperation or like thereof. This company seems to have access to all T-dot records, licenses, permits, et cetera. So, we are considering, and if you want to make a motion to continue the research, that's fine. We're considering doing that as a way of increasing revenue for the town. Our fire department responds to these truck fires. There's not a lot of calls sometimes. Sometimes there's phone being used, water being used, whatever. It's a system that we should look into, I think, at least do a little more research to see if we can't recruit some of these interstate fire powers. So, under new business, I guess, does the council have any thought?
Travis, looks like he'd like to talk.
I've got two things, if I can.
Sure.
So, the low-hanging fruit, that's Mr. Goody. I'm familiar with that permit. I knew where that was going. That's pretty well a lot. There's not really any life safety aspect there other than, you know, just enforcement of the ordinances and stuff like that. The other business I'm not familiar with, so I'd ask that if you approve that, I'll get on the stick with that tomorrow pending the life safety inspection.
He said it wasn't ready for inspection. That's why I think Alderman Wilson is making the point. What is our system? Do they come to you first and then do the work?
Yeah, so normally, they'll get the permits, and then, once this paperwork's done, it usually goes to my box, and then I go out and do the inspections and all that, and then address it. I mean, for planning corrective action on them, to fix it or maintain it, or whatever the event is.
And if there's a problem, then would we see if a violation?
Well, I mean, if they don't, if they didn't do the poking, yes.
Okay. And what's your thought on this insurance?
So, the insurance thing, I mean, I'm just going to be honest with all of you. I've driven my feet long enough with it. This thing's laid around, and I'm tired of seeing it on my desk. The guy's driving me nuts by emails. I'm asking that you move on it. It's, this is a, in layman's terms, a recovery, it's a third-party recovering agency that's been the same thing that I'm doing, that I invest several hours in. After we go to a truck fire on the interstate specifically, sometimes we're using phone to suppress these fires. This phone's about a hundred and fifty dollars a five-gallon pail. There's a FEMA schedule, a crisis schedule for the response of fire apparatus. I mean, that's just a straight, you know, hand-in-hand schedule with the government. You're able to pull it off the internet. That's what I'm getting at. It's the same schedule nationwide. So, that's some more expense that they're able to recover on stuff like this. And we used to be successful from a department doing it back in the days, pre-hazard response. Now, we've got these cleanup companies that's responding out. So, if we use booms, pads, oil dry, just the simple stuff that we use to keep a spill contained, the other companies get the worm. They're submitting a big overall claim. The trucking company pays out to them, and then we're over here, and we're required to respond, but we're not able to, you know, recover our supplies that we use. Now, what I encourage you to do is know that if it's Mrs. Jones from here in town, I'm not going to submit her bill because they're only getting what I submit to. So, if she loses her house in a structure fire, I mean, I believe she's got enough devastation. I'm not going to pester her with the suppression cost or, you know, an insurance claim.
But you would report the pro-incident...
Absolutely. I look more on this because some of these truck incidents, we're out six, seven, fourteen hours on the side of the interstate. That's costing us fuel and wear and tear and everything in between. So, you know, and I do know that the company has bona fide ordinances. They have mirror ordinances that you guys are, you know, can look at to rewrite our city ordinance, to actually use them. They have to have an ordinance in place for us to use them. So, part of this is, you know, I don't know how much y'all have studied on it, getting you as the board to accept it.
I've read it, and I think it's a good avenue that you find, we find, and you find a way to... It simply says, Fire Recovery USA offers fund recovery to local fire departments for motor vehicle incidents, hazmat cleanup, vehicle fires, trucker fires, foster rescue, water incidents, fire inspections, and more.
That's right.
So, I think there's a broad spectrum here being covered, and we're living a lot of money on the table if we're having to turn around and you're having to buy, you know, ten bucks a phone after three months. That's fifteen hundred dollars.
That's right.
So, yeah, I'm all in.
And all of these insurance companies, most all these insurance companies, there's a set aside allotments for fire suppression, for fire laws. And unless, tell one of them things you don't ask, you don't receive. So, if you don't ask for it, and you don't pester on for it, they're not going to pay. That's one of those expenses that they sit on. So...
Do you know if there are any other companies that offer this?
Yes, there is. Montego used to use Kevin Cost Solutions, I think, if Ed remembers all that. That was back in, what, two thousand and ten days? I remember submitting claims. Montego's used a recovery system. That system was through Alabama, and I believe it has since went away. It's went bankrupt or something. But that was the last one that I remember them using.
So, I was wondering if it's worth RFP in so that we could maybe get a better rating?
I feel if we make a dollar in what these guys are doing, that's a dollar that we didn't have, is where I look at it. Beggars can't be choosers. I've put too much time into this. I don't have time to build another.
I had a concern about the rate. The other concern I have is when I read the contract, it says that we are responsible for making sure that what they do is legal. So, this is a California company that's doing insurance recovery, and insurance law is pretty complicated. And the contract puts us on the hook for making sure that what they do complies with Tennessee insurance law. And Mayor, did you, did you catch that?
I think I may have caught that. Now, leaving with an attorney to discuss that and prepare an ordinance, as Dan recited, to fit Tennessee. But yeah, you're...
Yeah, there's going to have to be some ordinances. I do know that. We'll have to get some ordinances written, some verbiage written from the legal side of us.
Exactly.
It's not one of these things that we can just go tomorrow, and you guys say yes, and then I go submit a bill to them tomorrow, or a claim. There's going to have to be some verbiage written There's going to have to be some verbiage attached to this.
Oh, we need to move on.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, we're missing money.
Proceed with conversation with the attorney, the contractor view, and ordinance preparation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the ordinance?
Mr. White?
Mr. White?
Thank you. I would ask the council to consider doing a study, or whatever y'all like to do on that stuff, to, I think it should be here at City Hall, memorabilia, kind of, kind of history of Mont Eagle. I don't think we should be competing against the Grand County Historical Society in a way to that level. But just things of Mont Eagle that could be, for instance, put in, well, kind of like Napoleon's office. I mean, they have a nice little display, and it's not a, you know, a big thing. You have to secure it. There's probably when you were sheriff. There are many, many things. Many pictures, old cars, on this person, and I don't think I've got a picture.
This was about 1946. I was, if they hadn't, yeah. Tell me what those...
Well, I don't want shit.
Where is, where is Moses Rock?
It's in the assembly.
Behind the auditorium in the...
I know, we're all...
But I'm asking you now to tell me what those, what those things are.
Everything is slides, aren't they?
For the Dixie Theater. Oh, and the drive-in operating. If you wanted to advertise, that company would do your advertisement, and then before the movie or intermission or whatever, then they put those up. And that's how you advertise at the Dixie Theater in Mont Eagle.
Really? Do I have a copy?
Well, I mean, I think y'all need to do the study, and there's other things you might want to do. For instance, Metro Nashville now has, they've named it Channel Five. A mural you may have seen on TV. It's just a heart, but it's a mural on the building, and it's unreal, the number of people coming to get the picture made. And just little things like that, it doesn't cost, you know, a whole lot of money, but it's a positive thing. And is the tiger still here, or is it... I always thought that area, if it could be protected by camera or sort of anything. Y'all would see inside of it. You know, I don't think it's a museum, I don't know if it needs some telemetry video even.
I hear you saying you're our first donor?
Well, I've got a lot of stuff, and nobody really cares about it anymore. But the people, the old people that used to be here, they do. But the new people come in, they don't know what the historical history or... And I think you'd have a lot of people that would contribute. But again, I don't think you'd even compete against the Grand County Historical Society. We may be like a little satellite, and they might want to do something here, you know, a spot, and attract people to come later on. But if somebody came in, maybe thinking about living here, or getting information from City Hall, or even people that live here, kind of give them a little bit of, just a flashback. And, 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 uh, and I think they could cause its relations, right, for the down in Mont Eagle. And I don't see very little cost, it's ten minutes and stuff like that, or in all conditions. But doing something is better than doing nothing.
Well, you know, on the 25th, we're going to have that, when we have the big event here at City Hall, we're going to have the Historical Society doing a Mont Eagle-centric display. So maybe, maybe, could you bring some of your stuff in, and we could...
I don't have a whole lot, I got postcards, pictures.
Backpedaling now.
There's people like Mr. White, Johnny White, that's, I'd say, is on the internet, that's got a lot of pictures. Yeah, but it could be things other than pictures, pictures could be a part of it. I've got several little cups, and I don't have old just like you, but I, it looks old. Yeah, I don't think it looks old to me. I've got all sorts of little things. I've got a porter hat from the first Mont Eagle Hotel in a hat box. And when I bought it off eBay, they sent it to me, and on the top of it is a little, about a five-page document about the Mont Eagle Hotel. And the top floor was for baller and dancing. And it told all about it, and I have never been told any of that stuff. And I was more proud to get the little brochure than I was the hotel porter hat. And, 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 uh, I have, you know, it's, what I've got, I would gladly give if just the people could enjoy it. Otherwise, I'd leave it like a meatball, you know, and I don't want to do that.
It would have to be a display, we'd have to find where, and as you say, secure.
Yeah.
But I like it, I think that's...
You know, I would like the audience to center that concept, and if, you know, all divisions are here, then... And it might be, you know, not like here, and they just be... No, I would like the audience to see it and see if it did be a kind of a, with relations project with the town of Mont Eagle, and see it peaceful to publish to residents, plus, I don't see if you want to get a whole good private procedure. I think it's something for the people that are here.
Hey, Dan, we could combine that with, we need a tourist information center in the, in Mont Eagle, where people come and, you know, get information on what they can do.
But anyway, I don't know why, you know, that was a must, but... Just think about, you know, the concept.
No, and I'm serious about bringing some of it on the 25th. Let's get with Iva, because, you know, I think she's going to be in charge of who and what's on this display here. But it'd be good to have a little Mont Eagle-specific stuff.
Yeah, I think, okay. And in one thing, some places do, they, they will go back and of all the postcards of all the businesses in Mont Eagle, they will actually do a map. And some are now doing it on the wall, and it'll show, you know, when Dixie Lee came through Mont Eagle, it will show the businesses, the postcard where that business was. I thought that was pretty neat. And that's, I mean, there is some cost to that, but it's not extravagant. And it's not just doing it on a poster size thing, but it's really massive and solid, getting it on a wall was just as big as I have. And that was pretty neat. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the ordinance? Any comments from the ordinance as well? Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Give me a second.
Say, we're going to... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's pretty neat.
We are adjourned.